We are on the record.
Okay, I'll throw this Township Council Agenda Meeting of March 1st, 2022 to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 22nd, 2021, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record on December 28th, 2021, and in the Newark Star-Ledger on December 27th, 2021. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 11:00 a.m. on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www-parcepani.net. Would you all join me in the flag slide? Roll call, please.
Mr. Karifi?
Here.
Ms. Graniani?
Here.
Mr. Musella?
Here.
Mr. Neglia?
Here.
Mr. DePiero?
Here.
Also in attendance are Mayor Jamie Barbario, Business Administrator Fred Carr, Township Attorney Michael Lavery, Township Clerk Colette Madden, Council President. We have a quorum, you may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, March 15th, 2022, 7:00 p.m., regular meeting, and April 5th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m., our Agenda Meeting. Approval of minutes, we will do that at the next meeting. Mayor, anything to report?
Yes, um, yes, Council President. With regards to the COVID cases, last month, there was approximately 800 or more COVID cases, as you know, they're coming down. The month of February is about a total of 160. So as you can see, it's actually coming down significantly. Also, with regards to the TRAP Nuda Release Ordinance, as you know, I'm looking to amend it. I contacted our Health Officer today, and I'm going to be sitting with the Township Business Administrator to hash out a change that works for both, hopefully works for both, the, no, the Nuda Release Program, but more importantly, for our residents that are affected. The No-Golf Utility, the catering, we hammered out the final, um, bid to be going out later this week. We just have to, um, just a few minor changes, and I want to detail that, working that tomorrow with, um, the QPA, RBA, Fred Carr, and Kevin Brancato, the Utility Director over there. Also, I met with the PBA Local 131 Police Union to start negotiations for the contract. Um, the negotiation will be going on between our Township Attorney, not Attorney, our Township Labor Attorney, our Business Administrator, and representatives from the PBA Local 131. Police Department, I just, I just wrote some notes down here, I think it's important for the Council to know. Fact is down, you know, we've had several retirements, and we're down to, we will be down to 87 police officers, which is alarmingly low. So what I said to the Chief is, I need to get a plan from the Chief on how we're going to beef up our Police Department to bring the numbers up, so the Township can function properly with our Police Department. Um, with that, I did tell the Chief that anytime a police officer retires, this used to be the policy, that we could hire right away, because we're too low. We're down to 87, and we can't be any, we can't get any lower than that, because then it affects all divisions within the Police Department. So, you know, we're going to be working that out. I'm going to get a plan from the Chief, what he recommends, and I told him, basically, what we can't do is we can't hire a whole bunch of police officers in one year, and that would affect the budget significantly. But we have to have some sort of a plan, three-year plan, to get it back up to 103. Even though the ordinance says 113, you know, I'd be comfortable with 103 to 106, you know, but we're significantly low, and we can't get any lower than that. Um, economic development, uh, I've been meeting with certain individuals with regards to economic development, also, um, we have already companies that are here that are actually going to be renovating here in Parsippany, expanding their projects, and that should increase our ratables. Um, I'm not going to get down to the meeting we had the other night with economic development, because that, I'll leave that up to the liaison of that committee, Loretta Graniani, if she would like to speak on it. A Public Information Officer, what I had to do for a Public Information Officer is the fact that things are so tight with our budget that I felt I'd have to make some decisions with regards to Public Information Officer, which I think is pretty vital to a township like Parsippany, Troy Hills. So what I'm going to be doing is I'm going to be sharing the Public Information Officer that the Police Department has with the Township. So there's going to be dual roles for that individual, to do our posting, Facebook, um, all types of information that goes on the website. So that one person will be doing both the Police Department, with the Township having priority, um, for social media. I'm also going to be using our Recreation Director, Joe Pleasure, to also help out with our public information, until we can really solidify bringing in new salaries and stuff like that.
So we're not going to look forward to getting Alpha Dog in?
No, that's different. Alpha Dog, I will be meeting with Alpha Dog with regards to the website.
Right.
Social media is different. That's a process in which we put information out to the public, so they can go online, they can research the things that are going on in town, like you heard at the last meeting with the, uh, the lead copper rule. Well, that would be a social media expert that we would have post all that. Um, yes, I will be meeting with Alpha Dog with regards to their website, which I believe, and it truly is, a more friendly user website.
Absolutely.
And it's, um, it'll, and they actually work with our PIO, with our Public Information Officer. Um, they do most of the posting, but the Public Information Officer will direct them on what to post and stuff like that.
Good.
Also, I'll end it with this, I did meet with representatives of the Regional Flood Mitigation Task Force, which was created by Hanover Township Communitarian Ace Gallagher, has to do with the waterways in Parsippany, a lot of flood areas, as you know, New Road, Edwards Road, and we were looking for help from a Congresswoman, Mikey Sherrill, with regards to getting some funding to towns like Parsippany, Hanover, East Hanover, that have repetitive flooding in those areas, and we were looking for funding, and nothing was promised, but, you know, just a little bit would help, where we can mitigate some areas, because when you look at New Road over there, Edwards Road, that whole area's affected, when basically, East Hanover, Hanover Township, they all go into those tributaries, but it does affect Parsippany significantly, because as you know, we closed New Road down a lot, just from, just a, just a minor storm, because the water really has nowhere to go, there's no mitigation, uh, plan whatsoever. I will be looking for a confidential aide as well, uh, you know, prior administration, all administrations have a confidential aide, but as of right now, um, I haven't really, uh, taken the time out to do that. I'm still going through the budget, and, and I think that, that takes, you know, um, course preference, uh, with regards to that. So that's my report for tonight, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Township Council, any reports? Okay, Township Attorney?
No report, Council President.
Thank you. Business Administrator?
Yes, sir, I have two items for Council, and my number two is a memo from Jimmy Walsh, Public Works Director, requesting an amendment to the fees for omnibus drivers, no action tonight, just for future Council consideration, start thinking about it as we move forward. And then I have Vonda, wants to talk about Craftsman Farms, and that's all I have, sir.
Oh, turn the lights back up. I turned them down.
Oh, that's good, you might still see that. Yep, it's on. It's on. Uh, I have to face the screen, so I don't, so I can see what's coming up next, so with apologies, I'll turn this way, but certainly, we'll happily take questions from any of you. I'm going to step back here, a little bit out of the way. Did I do that? Do we know? Okay. So, first of all, I want to say thank you for having me tonight. Um, I'm, as Fred mentioned, I'm Vonda Givens, I'm the Executive Director of the Stickley Museum at Craftsman Farms. I've worked for the museum, I started my 14th year a couple of weeks ago, and have been the Executive Director for eight years. This is, I think, my eighth presentation for this body, and it's nice to be back in person, so thank you for having me, and it's nice to see some fans of the museum around here as well tonight. So, um, I was asked if I could be brief, and I think I can be, so let me get this started. Um, we do an annual presentation that's required by our operating agreement, but actually, I enjoy coming to be able to talk about what we're doing. So, to start with, I know there's a couple of new members of the Council, and of course, Mayor Barbario has heard many presentations from me over the years, but I will just start back with where our partnership started. This is what Craftsman Farms looked like in 1989. The Township knew that it was threatened by private development and paid fair market value to purchase the property, and then it took possession, and this is what it looked like. Um, that same year, it formed a partnership with the Craftsman Farms Foundation, uh, which is today known as the Stickley Museum at Craftsman Farms. We are tasked with overseeing the preservation of the site and interpretation of the site, which is really how we share it with the public. Um, tonight, I'm mostly talking about preservation, but, um, it became a National Historic Landmark the following year, and I'm going to come back to that as well, just in a little bit. Um, so this brings us to 2022, we skipped 33 years ahead, and, um, you can see, we've done a lot of work on the property with the help of a lot of people in the Parks Department and the Buildings Department to help us maintain the property and the buildings over the years. Um, and I did want to point out that we are a self-funded organization, so our annual $500,000 operating budget is earned, uh, we raise it annually to be able to stay in operation. And it's, it's important to mention this, because I'm going to be asking for capital funds for preservation, it's important to note that this is not how we pay salaries, we have to raise that money annually. So when I appeared last year on WebEx, which is a very different experience, um, I presented a, um, this, uh, over about the last year, what we had been through, um, since the previous year's presentation, and it was pretty significant. We had had a major tropical storm that, um, really just slammed through the property. I was there that day, it's hard to describe how sudden and damaging it was. But you can see here the massive poplar that fell onto, was just uprooted and fell onto the Annex, which is the building next to the log house, and there's the Mount Tabor Fire Department entering. We also had help from Joe Janaron and his Building Department crew. I don't actually know how everybody got there so quickly, but it really helped us keep the building from being flooded completely. So, um, when I appeared last year, I came with, it was, it had been several months that this had happened, and this is what the damage looks like. Um, the building was condemned that day, so we had been working ever since on emergency recovery, which dragged on for 10 months, partly related to the pandemic, we just couldn't get the materials to complete it. Um, but also, we started to talk about plans to rebuild. Before this damage had happened, we had been planning to move our shop, which is, of those who've been there before know that it was in the kitchen of the log house for many years, and we were going to move it into the Annex here. The building had a lot of rot on the exterior, um, we knew that we would need to do work on it eventually, but we did not expect the timeline to move up by August of 2020. So, um, we were all taken by surprise, unprepared to move in this direction, and the very first conversation I had with Fred was about this problem, where we're not really ready for another capital project, we had just finished a major one, and he really encouraged me to take a step back and not just rebuild something, to get something rebuilt, but to pay attention to what we really need as an organization, and to focus on that. And so that's what we did. We also started talking about the kitchen, which is, back up here and show you, it is, there's a little hallway right here that leads over to the kitchen right there. And the kitchen was flooded during this storm, and we had to empty out the kitchen of the shop for the first time in many, many years. That gave us time to really start to think about the kitchen as well. We wanted to restore it for a long time, but, um, there just hasn't been a way to move the shop out of it. We needed to be open, but we were already closed. So we began to work on a plan to restore it and to talk to, um, the Township further about, could we do both at the same time? It would, there would never be a better time. But the real advantage here was to address very serious frustrating issues with the water main, the water lines, the sanitary lines, and the security. So, uh, for the Director of the Museum, I mean, everybody else is probably excited about restoration, I'm most excited about dealing with all of these other problems, and the cost didn't go up very much by doing this, and we are able to address serious needs in both buildings at the same time. So last year, I brought this project for $1.5 million to, um, this meeting in April, and then asked if we could pursue a grant for half of that money from the New Jersey Historic Trust. I applied for that grant the following month, um, with the Council approval, and then in September, we found out that we had received the $750,000 award, um, for this project. So, big sigh of relief on my part that that worked out, and then, um, we, um, have been slowly moving towards getting started with the project. This is a picture of what the Annex is expected to look like, it'll have a beautiful wall of windows looking out on the landscape when we're finished. So groundbreaking is coming up soon, so I wanted to invite you all to this on April 9th, 2020, at 4 o'clock p.m. We'll have the log house open, and our new building, the Education Center, so people can see it. We have been open only on a limited basis since all of this took place, but I do expect that we'll be able to open, um, at least in a limited way again, um, for tours inside the building once we start construction. So the reason I'm here tonight is less for this previous project, we have a big one coming up, but I don't want to stop momentum on other projects that need to be addressed on the property. So this is a map that's just a reminder that each one of those little green points is a building, so there are nine buildings on the property. That's nine buildings for us to oversee their preservation, and one of our challenges is always to be juggling between buildings that are already in use and operation and maintaining them, and buildings that we haven't gotten to yet, that still need to not deteriorate before we can get to them. So tonight's projects are really exemplify that very well. Um, I've talked about, we're going to talk about a couple of different areas of the property. This is called the Historic Zone, everything that is essentially from the parking lot down to the twin cottages in this area is called the Historic Zone. I've talked about the Annex here already, and the kitchen, and I'm also going to be talking about the main building, the log house. The cottage over here, the White Cottage, is one of three cottages on the property, and if you've been to the property before, you may not have even noticed it. It's kind of off in the corner by itself. You can see here that it is even between houses, Powder Mill grew up around the White Cottage. As we've been working on it, we know more about its importance, it was likely a private cottage for Gustav Stickley and his wife, um, in a way that they couldn't have privacy in the log house. They had intended to build a house that they never were able to do. This building has suffered some deterioration over the years that really needs to be addressed, and we've had a lot of delays, uh, just new buildings, damaged buildings, all sorts of things. We finally got to Phase 1, and I'm really pleased to say that we were able to get, we are, when I say it's completed tomorrow, I really mean that, that they've been trying, been waiting for the parts, for the gutters to come in, and they're finally here. So the contractor says he's coming back tomorrow to finish up this work. So what we'd like to do now, and what one of the resolutions in front of you, is to request, um, approval to proceed with stabilization Phase 2. And to do that, it requires, um, a budget of $268,000. Remarkably, that's very similar to Phase 1, the prices haven't gone up that much, um, since, I think we started talking about this in 2014. So Phase 2, also pursuing a grant for at least half of the funding from the New Jersey Historic Trust. I've spoken with them about this, they supported the first phase, and they agree that even though we have a big open grant with them, a $750,000 grant, they don't usually like to give out multiple big grants at one time, but they understand that we are dealing with a lot of buildings, and they seem in favor of, um, of us coming back and asking for this. So the grant, the resolution is for full support of the project, and, um, a commitment to half of the funding for it, and I have to have permission from the owner of the property to be able to pursue a grant for it. The second project, the second resolution in front of you, is more about the log house. If you've been inside the building, you've probably noticed the fireplaces, they are, I'm guessing, the most important architectural feature on the house, I'm not sure would be more important. This is the one in the living room, there are five throughout, I'll show you the fifth one in a second, but they all are hammered, hand-hammered copper, and they all have mottos on them that are hammered into them, this one, "A World of Strive Shut Out" and "A World of Love Shut In," we've been using a lot over the last couple of years, and it's kind of a touchstone for the museum. So, these are really important to the museum, and, um, there's problems with the hoods on a couple of places that I want to point out. You can see here that there are, that the hoods are pulling away from the wall. They, the, the copper hoods are attached to the wall by screws that are screwed into wooden plugs, and those wooden plugs are over 100 years old, so they're starting to deteriorate, you could imagine that. The screws are missing in some cases, and you can see that the, that the hoods are pulling away from the wall, and we're concerned that they're just going to, some of them are going to fall. I've known of this problem for a while, but haven't really known how to deal with it, because the hoods are the kind of thing that you don't want just anybody touching them. So I'm pleased to say that I think we have a really good plan moving forward, and, um, the resolution related to this is including being able to reattach the fireplaces and be able to restore them, but also to do some conservation work on the hoods as well. You can see from this one that there was a moisture buildup in the chimney, and, um, the, it trickles down the hood, fortunately not every time it rains, but occasionally, but it leaves streaks across it, it's really impossible to clean without a conservator doing it, you just don't want anybody to touch it. Um, and so we are going to be able to address cleaning and reattaching the hoods with a $45,000 project. We're going to Morris County Historic Preservation Trust for this project, and I've also spoken with them about this, they understand that this is a really vital part of this property. So the resolution is not for the funding, it is really just for the approval to pursue the grant and to do the project. In closing, I want to say something about how we're doing as an organization, like most nonprofits, we have been on this roller coaster ride through the last couple of years of the pandemic, but really, the, the, the tropical storm has been more damaging, um, just for our trying to keep going. Um, you can look, if you're familiar with the, the shop where it used to be in the kitchen, we had to empty it out because of the storm, and then, um, you can see here, it's full, it's really empty there. Uh, because we don't have a shop, it's difficult, there's no more for people to go when they come to the property before they, they go in to take tours. We could have put the shop back in and opted not to, because we knew we were about to do construction on it, so we didn't want to deconstruct it again, so we've been kind of in a holding pattern. We have been open with grounds tours from April to October, which was at least being able to open on some beautiful days in the summer, and we had a couple of very well-received Craftsmas or Christmas open houses, um, with 200 attendees each day. It's very heartening to see that even though we've been closed for a long time, that people wanted to come out and visit. We had people come from far away and people next door who walked through the property every day but hadn't yet been able to see inside. So it was a couple of great days, and we're looking forward to having more. So as soon as we can get construction started, I hope to be able to, um, open up again and give tours again. All this time, we've been open online, and we've been doing lots of programs online, we started in March or April of 2020 and have gone ever since. The map on the left shows where people have tuned in from. We have done a Saturday afternoon class for many, many weeks since, um, April of 2020, and a lot of free programs for members. We've averaged about 68 participants, um, all of, and throughout all of 2021 for these programs. Most of the people who attend programs are also members, and this is a map of members across the country, so there's 263 unique zip codes, so you can see where people are members. The coasts tend to be very popular with Stickley, but maybe we can get somebody from every state eventually. So in closing, I just, I said I was going to come back to the National Historic Landmark, and I touched on this last year, and I, if, I just wanted to say something about it again. You know, Morris County has a lot of National Historic Landmarks that is not typical around the country, it's because of the Revolutionary War, there's a lot of landmarks here, but it's a pretty special designation, a lot of communities would love to have a National Historic Landmark, but it comes with challenges, because they're expensive to maintain just by nature, they, they just, the demands of preservation are significant. And I wanted to just say something about, um, what this investment can mean. Um, I went to, uh, this is Falling Water, Frank Lloyd Wright, uh, the famous architects, arguably is most famous residents. It's in Bear Run, Pennsylvania, which is about five hours from here, and I went to see it a couple of years ago, and, uh, there's not, though offense to Bear Run, Pennsylvania, because I'm from a small town in Tennessee, there's, there's not a lot in Bear Run except for Falling Water, and it attracts many thousands of people every year. And when I was there, because this is the kind of thing I would notice, I learned that this site is one of 30, um, Frank Lloyd Wright, his, mostly historic houses, but not entirely. They are reciprocal sites, meaning that they are consortium that works together to better, it's for mutual benefit essentially, which I think is a pretty cool thing for them all to do. And this made me want to ask at this presentation last year, how many historic house museums nationwide are dedicated to Stickley? And the answer is one, there's one, and it's here in Parsippany. And the reason that's significant is because Stickley's not as famous as Frank Lloyd Wright, but Frank Lloyd Wright fans tend to also be Stickley fans. For any fan of American design should want to come to Craftsman Farms, so there is opportunity in investing in the property. Stickley's House in Syracuse is getting finally attention for preservation, which is a wonderful thing, it's not going to be a house museum, it'll be something like a boutique hotel. The Museum of the American Arts and Crafts Movement opened in Florida last year, I went to the grand opening gallows, really an amazing place, has an incredible Stickley collection. It is not the home of Gustav Stickley, it will never be the home of Gustav Stickley, that is right here in Parsippany, New Jersey, and just, I wanted to end by saying that by developing the property, investing it in what the Township currently owns, when we're fully open at full capacity, we can attract people to stay here overnight, we already know that people shop in the area, that more than 60% of our visitors also dine in the area, so we want people to be proud in Parsippany that we're here, but we also want to be a part of a cycle of investment made into the property that was returned back to Parsippany as well. So, that's my presentation, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Vonda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions from the Council? Any input from the public?
I have to just say, thank you, Vonda, and thank you, Council and Mayor.
Davy, come on up, you can't, you have to talk to the microphone.
I can't be quiet, I've been part of this too long. And, uh, for those of you that don't know, my wife Nancy was one of the residents in town that went to Frank Priori and the Council at that time, and Mayor, uh, with Michael DePere, um, Council President Michael DePere to save this site, and it's been a real treasure for the Township. But what I like to say as a businessman, this foundation manages this site on behalf of the Township, doesn't operationally cost our taxpayers anything, okay, to run this place, first app, this professional we have here, and the dedication they have. So I believe that this is a unique thing, and I've talked to a lot of people about the model of a partnership between a municipality and a private foundation, okay, to fund and save historic sites, and there's a lot of interest in that, and we need to capitalize on that a bit more, and we got the person here that'll help us do that, and with your continued support, it's a hell of a good investment.
Thank you, Davy.
Thank you.
Vonda does a fantastic job, she should be complimented over and over again.
Oh, thank you. I, I will say, I'll add that I'm also asked about how to replicate this partnership in other places, and I always say, it takes a lot of civic will to save places like this and to keep them safe, you, you have to save it every day, and that is, Parsippany has shown that willingness, but not everybody is up for it, it's a big commitment.
Okay.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Carr, that's, uh, the end of your...
Yes, sir.
...time, right? Okay, thank you. Township Clerk, anything?
Uh, no report, Council President, thank you.
Township Officers and Committees?
Council President, if I may, please.
Mrs. Graniani?
This past Friday, February 25th, new officers were elected to the Economic Development Advisory Committee. Secretary Ron Raj Dipoteti, Vice Chair was Dr. Metta, and our Chairman Frank Cahill. As the Council Liaison, I look forward to working with the new leadership of this committee and our administration in bringing businesses to our Township. This past Saturday, the committee presented a plaque to Mr. Mara's Dance Studio in Lake Hiawatha. Upcoming ribbon cuttings and plaque presentations are as follows. Birdie's Hot Chicken, 131 New Road, this Saturday, March the 5th at 12 o'clock. Godfathers in Parsippany on March the 10th, Saturday, March the 10th at 11:00 a.m. And then on May 11th, Edward Jones, 2 Selden Way, Suite 301 in Parsippany. And then on May 11th, Edward Jones, 2 Selvin Way, Suite 301 in Parsippany. We have meetings. The next meeting will be on April the 6th, and it is open to the public if anyone would like to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other reports? Okay, now, remind me, the engineering report we're going to read.
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Yes, sir.
So you have to remember to put it on for next, okay. Okay, we're up to bids taken. February 2nd, 2022, pump station number four, gravity conversion project. February 3rd, 2022, traffic signal maintenance for Riddleton Road and Rita Drive, Beechwood Road and Jefferson Road and Smith Road. Item three, February 10th, 2022, rental of heavy equipment. Bids to be taken, March 10th, 2022, Route 46, water main rehabilitation, phase one. I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Negria.
Yes.
And Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Floor is open to the public on any matter.
Hey, come up. State your name and address. You have five minutes. Time's fine in.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ken Dolce, 21 Winfield Drive. Guess it'll be easier. I sent you all a package on Friday about saving Drew Forest. It contained some background information as well as a resolution, and I'd like to talk a little bit about it tonight, and I'm asking you to put it on the agenda for your next meeting and then pass this resolution. If you don't have the material, if you haven't seen it, I have some, I can give you a little bit of paper tonight, and I can resend the material if you didn't get it.
I believe everyone received.
Okay, very good. I'm just getting a look like, what is this? Sorry. So Drew Forest is a 53-acre preserve that's virtually untouched open space in Morris County, which is pretty unique. And it's a forest that's been owned by Drew University for many years, and now because of financial issues, they want to sell it for development. I'm going to talk to you about three reasons why we should support what, what the Friends of Drew University, Friends of Drew Forest want to do, which is basically to have it zoned for conservation easement and then be able to sell it to a land conservancy and avoid development. So aside from being a wildlife and plant sanctuary, it's a recharge area for the Berry Valley Aquifer that we and 25 other towns use for our well water. Any recharge area is important, and the water in the Berry Valley Aquifer, as far as I understand, can move around, and if you, you know, pump water from one area, the, you know, water from another area within the valley, with the Berry Valley is going to, you know, come and replace the water that you pump. But not all water recharge areas are alike. Many are developed land, like across the street on Water View, which is prime recharge land, but now it's paved over. So any water that comes off of there that gets recharged is going to be dirty. It's going to be, it's going to have gasoline contaminants, it's going to have oil contaminants, it's going to have contaminants from, from the, you know, blacktop on the parking lots. But Drew Forest is all woods. It delivers very highly, well, highly purified water. It's the best kind of water, best quality water you can get in the aquifer, which helps keeps our costs of purification low. If it's sold for development, that means that the quality of the water would be reduced. A lot of it could be impermeable, which would reduce the actual amount that even gets into the Berry Valley Aquifer. Second, this is open space, which is an increasingly risky, or a commodity that's increasingly at risk in Morris County. And third, forests protect us against climate change. In New Jersey, we have the Global Warming Response Act, which was passed in 2019 that aims to cut greenhouse gases by 80% by 2050. In order to do that, they said they need a 33% increase in New Jersey's forests and wooded areas to capture carbon and to increase carbon sequestration. This is not a minor issue. This will be virtually impossible to achieve. So protecting almost every tree is important in order to try to reach that goal. So the Friends of Drew Forest want the land rezoned. Right now, it's zoned for university, and apply a conservation easement so that it could be sold to groups like New Jersey Conservation Foundation. And evidently, the county is also going to play a role in this, and that's the main reason that they've been asking towns to pass this resolution, is to demonstrate to the county that there's a lot of support for this. So tonight, I'm asking you to support this resolution, protect our water, open space, and climate, and demonstrate Parsippany's willingness to help neighboring Morris County communities achieve this for our county. To think about it as if Troy Meadows was somehow at risk and we needed the support of surrounding communities to do nothing more than pass a simple resolution to aid us in whatever we were trying to do to save Troy Meadows. Surely, we would want to do, we would ask them, and we would expect that they would do it, since it's simply a resolution that doesn't have any other encumbrances on them. So I ask you to please put this on the agenda and pass it at the next meeting. Are there any questions?
No, thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I want to raise an agreement. I wasn't planning on coming and saying anything, I just wanted to, but hearing you talking about the.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Judy Hernandez, 5 Marine Road.
Thank you, Judy.
When you were talking about the stormwater on New Road and the flooding, it got me thinking about the Parsippany Green Team and our green infrastructure initiatives that we're trying to get started again. We have two months, and we can get silver this time for Sustainable Jersey, which would be pretty awesome for this administration. It's May 6th, and so I figured I'll just get up and ask if we maybe can meet with you sometime to talk about what we've done so far, and I know you guys know because you've supported a lot of the initiatives and some of the ways we want to go forward. One of them is for green infrastructure, which would help a lot with the flooding in Parsippany. I've got buy-in from some people at Rutgers, Chris Obruck, that you know so well because you've worked with him, and I'm on that executive board for green infrastructure at Rutgers. And with Highlands Conformance and, and being part of Sustainable Jersey, we have the opportunity to maybe get some grants for that work, so it would be beneficial for our town.
All right. Just, okay, I'd like to segue into the Green Team with regards to the stormwater management, and I handle that, and the towns that I was the administrator, and especially stormwater management with regards to, and I do want to meet with the Green Team. I'm going to probably revamp it. I'm going to probably change it around. I pretty much spearheaded it, and I didn't spearhead it. I did work with other individuals and stuff like that. But I do want to have a briefing on the Green Team, where you're at, and where I'd like to see it go.
That would be good, because we did have a commitment for the goal pledge for renewable energy. We do have grants that Parsippany was awarded, and so the renewable energy part of it has, is underway, and it would be a great benefit for the township in conserving energy.
Okay, with regards to the Green Team, what, I mean, what criteria, and that would be for meeting with me and the Green Team with regards to, you know, the wellness of, you know, you got the wellness programs, you have the, you know, market, food market programs and stuff, and I'm sure, you know, we, we have, we can meet those criterias as well. But where I was, stormwater management, well, stormwater management is different there than here. Here, it's more necessary, but when you're in like Hunterdon County and areas like that, I mean, still stormwater management is important, but, you know, we could, New Road, as you know, is a repetitive flooding area that needs to be addressed, so.
Yeah, it's a pretty significant action item in Sustainable Jersey, and as an engineer, I'm pretty.
And I know, I know.
Committed to the green infrastructure part of it, but we had an expert in renewable energy and electric and solar, and so we started with that first, and so Parsippany's made a gold pledge, and it's only one of a few in the state, so it's really good for our town.
And I just want to emphasize that, that I'm going to, I'm going to revamp the Green Team.
Okay. Okay. I hope we don't get rid of some of the initiatives that we've started already. And what does that mean, though? Because I, there was a resolution with my name on it that this town had approved.
Well, I'll look at the resolution and what the resolution says. It means I want to run it the way I want to run it. That's basically what it means.
Thanks for the clap.
Okay. Thank you, Judy.
You're welcome.
Anyone else want to speak? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Ms. Grignani. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Regarding New Road, most of the people here weren't involved. We tried many years ago to raise New Road by a foot so it wouldn't flood, and the DEP would not allow us to do that because you're blocking the water. And water has to flow wherever water's going to flow was, was the DEP's response. So we have to let it flood New Road, which is, in my opinion, kind of stupid. But the resolution to that that I saw was there is a wetlands area behind the Wawa, and I wanted the township to acquire that and turn that into a detention basin. We could then run the pipes from where New Road is now underneath to that detention basin and raise New Road, and the water still had someplace else to go. And that was the intent that I had years ago, and, and for some reason, our township engineer thinks that's not workable. I don't know why. I think it is.
Council president, is that the area from Route 46? There's a gas station on the corner of New Road and 46. Is that part of the area that you're talking about, that there is the water that also floods in the, in the area?
Well, it floods further, further in, halfway in. You never went that way when it flooded.
Nope, never did.
Okay. From the, from the office complexes to the east of New Road, from that area is where it floods up to where the apartments are on the, on the west side. That's all flooded. It's about a 400-foot area that's underwater, literally underwater, by about a foot every time we have a hurricane or a heavy, a heavy rainfall. And the police have to be there, and they have to block it at both ends, and so anybody coming off of 280 has to use the Edwards Road going west, and then get on 46 further, further west, and then come back down to New Road around the water, do a roundabout. So the police are there, fire departments are there sometimes, and that's an expense every time we have heavy rain. And it would seem to me it'd be cost-effective if we could raise the road, channel the water over to that detention basin, and not have to pay police to be there and fire departments to be there all the time.
Thank you.
Something to consider. Okay, we're back, we're done with all of these items we're going to be running on at our next meeting. We're back to approval of payroll and bills list. Mr. Neglia.
Yes, approval of payroll and bills list. CFO Juan Yurabi recommend authorization for payments. Authorized payment of the 3322 regular payroll estimated at $1.7 million. Payment of bills from voucher list 3122 through 3322 estimate totaling $2,449,209.81. Motion to approve the authorization for payment above by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
And Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Anything else before we close the meeting?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll entertain a ultimate motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made to adjourn by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call, Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Ms. Grignani.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Neglia.
Yes.
Mr. DePiro.
Yes.
We're adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, have a good night, Justin.